Holdinger, please call the roll.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Shaki.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
And the next would be the approval of the minutes of the meeting of November 8th. Do I have a motion?
A move.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. First item, always a lot of fun. Report and recommendation of the 2012 audit report. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess we have with us tonight, Mr. Scott Termine from Wolf &amp; Company. You may recall, last year, when we were going through, discussing the renewal of the auditing firms, there was a push for some partner rotation on the firm. The prior three years, Mr. Mike Senko was the partner. So, Mr. Termine is the new partner on the job, as the council requested. And he's here tonight to go through just a few of the highlights, and then if there's any deeper questions, we'll be more than happy to entertain those. And with that said, I give you Mr. Termine.
Thank you all for having me here tonight, and for allowing us to conduct the audit again. I also appreciate the positive introduction there. Nobody ever refers to us as fun, so thank you for that. Just wanted to call a couple of things to your attention, because I think there is some very positive news in the financial statements for this year. And I'll start, first of all, with the independent auditors' report, which Brad has brought up on the screen for you. We were able to express what we refer to as an unqualified or a clean opinion on the financial statements, which is exactly what you want to see in the case. That means that we were able to satisfy ourselves that all of the amounts and disclosures are properly presented in accordance with accounting principles. So, again, exactly what you're looking for under the circumstances. For those of you who may not enjoy looking at this wonderfully thick document, I would call to your attention, on page 3 of the report, we begin with management's discussion and analysis. And this presents a very nice narrative overview of the financial statements and the results of operations for the year. So, I would call that to your attention, and encourage you to take a look at that, as it gives you a little bit of better understanding of the finances and results of operations. Moving ahead, I would turn to page 16 of the document, which has the fund balance sheets for the city. And within the general fund, you do at April 30th, 2012, have a unassigned fund balance position of just over $11 million. And that does represent over one-year worth of annual expenses for the general fund, which is a very healthy position to be in. And in addition to that, you actually have approximately $8.8 million of cash and investments for that fund, which is about 83% of your annual expenses. So, again, that's a good position to be in. Yes, sir.
Any questions?
We don't have that. Where's the... In the packet here? Am I missing it?
Yeah, let me see if... And this was the Dropbox that I said that I was told that you all have. It's the comprehensive... Report there.
It did come in a separate envelope.
It came separately, because the packet was so massive this week, that we couldn't all put it in one file. That's why we did it that way.
Okay.
Would you prefer if we ask questions as we go along, or should we hold?
Yeah, you can absolutely jump in now, if you'd like, or I'll answer anything at the end as well.
Thank you.
And then, just flipping ahead to page 18 in the document. Yes?
I'm sorry, can you, since we didn't have it on our screen?
Sure.
Can you tell us where that breakout is, the 11 million?
Sure.
And then the 8.8 invested?
Within the, if you're looking at a hard copy, it would be page 16.
Yeah, it's not...
Of the report. And PDF.
Yeah, it's not on there. Oh, that's... Maybe it's on.
It's going to be page 36 of 170 in the PDF file.
If you don't mind, just giving us a moment to get there.
Yep, absolutely. Everyone there now? So, the 11 million that I referred to would be at the very bottom of the first column. And that shows the unassigned fund balance position. And then, the cash and investment position is at the top of the very first column. And you combine the 4.6 million with the 4.2. And that's what I referred to as being about 83% of your annual expense figure. And then, if you move ahead to page 39 of the PDF file, you'll have the income statement for the general fund and the other governmental funds of the city. I'm sorry, page 38 in the PDF file, and page 18, if you have hard copy file. The general fund there had an increase in fund balance of about $670,000 over the prior year. And that's a combination of a couple of factors. First one being increased collections of sales and telecom taxes, and then just good control over expenses for the general fund. $670,000 increase. And that did include transfers to your capital funds of about $310,000. So, favorable results of operations within the general fund as well. And then, I would turn your attention... Actually, one other thing I'd point out here is the capital outlay figure, which is about halfway down the page. Total expenses for the village on capital-related expenses were about $4.2 million. And of that, we classify roughly $3 million of those expenses as capital assets within your financial statements. So, that represents all the spending on infrastructure and some of the larger-ticket capital items within the city. So, then I would turn your attention to page 20 in hard copy, and page 40 in the PDF file. And here you have the statement of net assets or balance sheet for the water and sewer fund. And here, you have unrestricted net asset position of approximately $5.9 million. And that's towards the end of the first column there. And that, again, is just about one-year's worth of annual expenses. So, that, again, is a very healthy position to be in. And I would also point out, at the very top, the cash and cash equivalents position of about $12 million. And that is largely the result of unspent bond proceeds for the new debt issuance that you had, that as of April 30th, had not been spent down. So, that's where that large increase in cash came from over the prior year. And then, on the following page, page 21 or page 41 in the PDF file, you'll see the results of operations for the water and sewer fund. And here, there was a decrease in net assets of about $298,000, the very first column. And although that is a deficit, if you look at the budget versus actual results, you had actually forecasted and budgeted for a significantly larger decrease in that fund than what you actually experienced. So, you did have some positive results there, as compared to budget. And that deficit is largely the result of some significant capital spending in that fund. So, if there's any questions, I can answer on any of those numbers. I'd be happy to entertain those now.
I think we're fine.
If not, then the last thing that I would call to your attention is the other document that you should have received, is our report on internal controls, which is where we make some comments on any issues that we find as we review your internal control structure. And just one comment that we pointed out for this year, which is a new comment, pertains to the Prairie Fest operations. And we made a recommendation that you formalize some procedures regarding the Prairie Fest collections, most significantly, the cash collections for that event. And I understand in the document also includes a management's response section, which does indicate that that is actually already in the works. So, for fiscal year 13, we anticipate that that will be taken care of. And then, we did have one prior year comment that we noted pertaining to capital assets that the city did implement. So, we consider that to be addressed, and is no longer a comment or recommendation for the current year. So, that's it on the report on internal controls. So, again, if there's anything that I can answer for you, I'd be happy to do that now.
Any questions? Alderman Winger.
If you don't mind taking us back to that first page that we stopped on. I think it was page 16.
Sure.
On the hard copy. And just take us through each section again, because I think that would be useful, and explain what each... Like, there's like three... I'm trying to get back to it here.
Sure.
Like, starting with the li... Starting with the liabilities. So, it's essentially anything, our expenses for, what are you saying, for the year?
Well, first thing I'd point out is the columns that you have there. Our first, the general fund, and then the capital projects funds. The way that the governmental financial statements are prepared is, we only show what are considered to be major funds. And there's certain mathematical criteria for what meets that definition. All the other governmental funds get rolled into that third column, which is labeled non-major funds, and combined there. So, then, as you work your way down the page, we start from the top with the assets of the city, which is primarily cash, and then some significant receivables from tax collections and other sources.
So, that's revenues coming in, as well as our reserves?
Uh...
Is that what you're...
Not necessarily revenues, because assets and revenues are not the same.
Okay.
Your revenues and expenses would be presented on the income statement, which would be page 20. We're flipping back two pages, within the electronic copy. So, again, as you work your way down, it's assets, and then liabilities or obligations of the city. And that's primarily your accounts payable for any bills that may have come in prior to year-end, but not paid before the end of the year.
Okay.
And then, we take the assets minus the liabilities to arrive at that fund balance figure for each of the funds that are presented there. So, that's kind of how the statement flows.
So, it would be safe to say we have $15,773 in reserves? According to this, or no?
Yeah, if cash and investments being the most significant, as you're calling reserve, then yes, 15.7 million of available assets in the fund, yes.
Okay.
And we only present what we refer to as current assets. So, this doesn't include any capital assets of the city. This is only things, items that can be spent within a one-year timeframe. So, that's where the receivables come into play.
Anything else? Alderman Wesley.
So, right now, if we would say all our funds are closed out for the season.
Sure.
We what, $15 million in reserve? In the general fund?
It includes receivables there.
Right.
It's not necessarily cash. Your cash and investments are only 8.8 million.
But then, if you slide that thing up... My way. Slide your... Where does that 11 million come down? You had 11 million.
The 11 million is...
Okay, I see it.
Three numbers up from the bottom.
Yeah.
And that's what we refer to as unassigned. So, you have a couple of different categories of net assets or fund balance there. Some of those have specific uses attributed to them. So, the unassigned portion, you can use for anything.
Mr. Mayor.
The $11 million, is that what's cash reserve? In the general fund?
It's not cash. Your cash and investment position is only 8.8 million of that $11 million. So, again, we take your total asset position minus any outstanding liabilities to arrive at net assets. That doesn't necessarily equate to all spendable cash, because of the fact that you do have uncollected receivables, and you also have other bills outstanding that have not been paid. So, that's where you get to the primary difference between the fund balance position versus available cash. So, if you're purely concerned about cash, it's just those top two lines.
Alderman Woods.
Just like change of subject.
Sure.
Last year, I believe that there was a note, something about asset tracking, that we needed to improve our ability to track assets. Is that no longer an issue? It's in the works, it's solved?
Correct. That was the comment that I referred to as having been considered satisfied, essentially. There is tagging that's being done on the assets. And there was also a comment regarding the system that's used to actually record and track those assets. And we also consider that to have been satisfied. We do receive schedules from the city with the information that we need to arrive at our opinion, essentially.
Alderman Woods.
Question goes to staff, then. Is this software spreadsheet in-house created?
Microsoft Excel.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions? You may proceed, sir.
And if there's nothing else, um...
I can make a recommendation that we accept the report and recommendation for the audit 2012 report. Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for your information, sir. Next item is the report and recommendation on the 2012 property tax levy. And Mr. Wilson, again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, every year, we, as I'm sure you're all aware, need to pass a property tax levy to get the property tax money from the county. And this year is no different than any other year. Merely, a little bit earlier this year, with the way the holiday schedule falls, we had to back it up into November instead of December, as we typically do. The way the legislation reads is that we're able to get 4.9% or CPI, whichever is less, is what we're entitled to, plus new growth. We were advised in March, April of last year, that the CPI for this year would be 3%. However, we do know that there was a couple of houses built in town, some industrial renovations that went on, stuff like that. So, in an effort to make sure that we don't miss any of that, we still do request the 4.99, but then fully expect the county to knock us back down a lot closer to 3%. So, when we prepare the budget, we're only going to put in 3% into the budget. But we still request the maximum that we can, without having to do a public hearing, a truth and taxation hearing. So, moving forward from that, the property tax rate is, if I remember back to 3rd or 4th grade, the quotient, which is the answer to a division problem. So, what we do is we take the valuation, divide that by the amount, and then that gets us to the rate. So, you can see it's been going up over the last few years, the last three years in particular. It shot up. That is due to the triennial review that the assessor does, the township assessor does. And they advised us at that time that the EAV would be going down approximately 10% each of the next three years. And so, you can see the numbers increasing is in direct correlation with the EAV dropping in that mathematical equation to get to this rate. So, so far, the last two years, I think we've averaged 10.1% decrease. One was 9.83, one was 10.32, so we're about 10.1. So, pretty much right on track with what Assessor Kane's office said we would be going down from an EAV standpoint. And this is just the verbiage of how we get to that target rate. And again, it's just a division problem. This is the total levy amount through 2011, is it actual? The 2012 is the proposed, with the 4.99% in there. Like I said, we do expect it to be approximately 3%. So, it'll probably be a lot closer to the 2.8283 range, instead of the 2.9 range. And then, this graph, you can see the EAV rising through 2009, and then with the triennial review, having the valuations start to come down. And then, we did project a 10% decrease for this last year as well, just to follow along with what the assessor's office had said. The last slide, and there's a duplicate, so I apologize for that. One thing that we did want to mention, though, and it's not in the PowerPoint, but it's in the memo, is on the police pension fund. Just as a heads-up for everybody. If you look at the memo, the police pension fund, this year, went through and reassessed a number of the variables that go into their actuarial funding. And they found that the mortality table that they were using was from 1984, which is significantly dated. And their assumed rate of return was 7.5%, which has proven to be not very attainable these last few years, to say the least. So, they went through and updated their mortality table, and also lowered their assumed rate of return to 6.75, to bring it in line with what the state's rate of return is. And so, a significant portion of this increase in the police pension fund contribution is due to that change in mortality table, and the change in the assumed rate of return for their investments.
Alderman Wesley.
Are you telling us when a police pension was trying to put together the pension, that they were using something back in 1984? Is that what I'm hearing here?
Correct. That was the... Unless I'm mistaken, chief, was it the '84 mortality table?
So, why...
I know some towns were still using the 1971 mortality table. They... I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but there was a mid-'90s mortality table that came out, and only about 40% of the actuaries actually agreed with the assumptions in that table. So, a lot of them stayed with the 1984 table, absent any new information. Then I'd probably punt over to the chief here, for a little more on that.
Yeah, actually, I wasn't at the pension meeting, and I'm not on the board anymore, but I do know a little bit of the reason that they updated that. The state just came out with their new guidelines, the Department of Insurance, and they were on the 1971 mortality table, too. The... I know that the pension fund, two years ago, went through an analysis of their actuariales that they were using, went out to bid for them, got presentations by them, and went with this new actuarial table. And I know Mr. Wilson was at the meeting that kind of... There was a few things that kind of came into play. Last year was very successful, and the actual request for a pension contribution went down $100,000, which was, you know, really not seen at all, anywhere. So, this one going up, while, you know, while it is a substantial increase, had last year not gone down by over $100,000, you know, it wouldn't have been, looked as big of an increase. It would have been just a gradual rise. But we had a really good year a couple of years ago, and that helped it go down, so... But the actuariales did recommend changing some of the guidelines, just like the Department of Insurance has just done. They've updated the mortality tables, increase in assumed years of service, increase in assumed disability rates, reduction in investment returns based on what's happened in the last 10 years, modification of salary growth rates, and payroll growth. So, that's what the state's doing, too. So, that's what the pension fund, from my understanding at that meeting, they kind of went under the actuarial guidelines to go ahead and update those tables.
So, my question here now, since we use that chart for the last couple of years, and we didn't ask for, the pension fund did not ask for... That much last year was less, so now, I take it, with going to this new one, the contribution that the pension fund's going to request is a lot higher, even though it was down last time. So, it's actually going to be a wash or higher now?
It will be higher than last year.
When did we know this was out there? I mean, I...
It's actually, it was just published in the IML that just came out this week, that the state is updating their stuff. So, this is all just happening this year.
My question here is, the pension board did not know this document was coming down sooner, like last year, that they were talking about this? I mean, I...
No, I would say, probably in 2005 or 2006, the assumed rate of return back then was 8%. And that was reduced down to 7.5 at one point, probably six to seven years ago. I don't remember the exact date. So, these change, you know, these things change over time. From '97 to '07, the pension fund made almost 10% a year. It's, you know, not the only fund that's been experiencing those downfalls, so...
Okay.
Alderman Coles.
I thought a few years ago, about four, five years ago, we had to pay a lot into the pension in order to bring it up to scale. Wasn't it about four years ago, when they... I know you were on the pension board then, and I thought you came in and said we had to increase our money into the policeman's pension, if I remember right, about four years ago.
Well, it generally goes up every year. Mr. Wilson, you remember if... I know that the city at one point had some unanticipated funds, and I believe they contributed in the range of $80,000 to $100,000 extra into it. It was, which isn't an insignificant amount, but as far as the overall, it wasn't a large amount. Maybe you can refresh?
Okay.
Yeah, the amount sounds about right. And that was the year that the Department of Insurance put out a report based upon their assumptions. The IML put out a report based upon their assumptions. And then, we had our report based upon our former actuaries' assumptions. And I think they were anywhere from 57% to 73%. It was just a wide spray in there. So, the city did contribute some extra that year to try and help bolster that. But just one comment I would like to make, though, is that while this is a big number and a little bit of a jump, one thing we can at least rest assured is that we're actually funding it for what we should. I mean, you can, you know, the number jumping like this, I mean, you can just imagine what, you know, what the state and some of the other places are going through, having not funded their obligations over time, so... Just, yeah. So...
Thank you.
Anybody else? Alderman Woods.
Yeah, maybe you can help me out. What kind of... Are we talking about the same thing? We went to the tax levy, and then the police pension. Is it a singular number? I know they both came from the same funding source, real estate taxes. But is it the same fund that we're talking about, or did we shift gears a little bit?
Sure. The property tax levy, because of the way the legislation is written, only covers a certain percent or a certain portion of the police pension... only covers a certain percent or a certain portion of the police pension fund's actuarial request. And the remainder of that um is plugged into the general fund budget to come out of general fund revenues. So I only mentioned it because of the the increase. I just want everybody to be aware that the increase was larger than what the increase in the property tax levy was gonna be. So there was gonna be an additional gap in there that we're gonna need to to fill when we do the budget uh coming up in February, March.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Anything more to add to?
Need a motion to approve?
Okay, so I'll make a uh motion to accept the report and recommendation on the two thousand and twelve property tax levy. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, two thousand and twelve property tax abatement ordinance. Here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh this is a little bit of a new one. Uh when we were discussing the the treatment plant over the last few years through various administrations, um there was a want to not go to a full referendum for the bonds. And so we went with the alternate revenue bonds that we issued in February. Um you'll notice in my memo, it says general obligation alternate revenue bonds. The alternate revenue bonds have what's affectionately known as a backdoor referendum, whereby if you say one year, you know, we don't have the money in the alternate revenue source, in this case being the water and sewer rates, you can not pass an abatement ordinance and the necessary funds to meet the principal and interest payments for that given year for the bonds will go on to the property tax levy. So in essence, forcing it to become a GO issue without actually having gone through the formal referendum process since we're a non-home rule community. Um it was my understanding and belief that the council wanted to pay for this through water and sewer bonds and not via a property tax levy. And that being the case, we need to pass the abatement ordinance so that the county does not put this on the property tax levy.
Now, will you, as we talked about this afternoon, will you go to the advantage and disadvantage of both? Of having the uh abatement of taxes or not, to have it either on the house taxes or the water bill? What the difference was there?
Sure, I mean, the basic difference is if it's done through the alternate revenue source, it's paid through um the water and sewer rates. Um and the rates we've talked about are gonna have to go up to cover, to cover these costs. Um if it's a GO issue, it would go on your property tax levy, which if you itemize your deductions, you can write off of your property taxes. Um the one thing, though, I I think I mentioned earlier, though, as well, is that since these were issued as an alternate revenue bond, um the intent is for it to be an alternate revenue bond. The bond world doesn't look at it very kindly if you just go ahead and not even try to to do that right off of the bat. Um you're effectively gaming the system at that point. Um but they do give you that out should things go completely sideways for you. But um like I said, it's been my understanding all along that the intention was to do it through through water and sewer rates. So we would wanna pass this to ensure that it does not go on to the property tax rolls.
Okay, Alderman Woods.
I'm a little lost. So who would, if we didn't, who would make the change of what the funding source was for those bonds? Meaning, we we set it up that the sewer and water fund would pay those bonds, correct? You're saying without passing this ordinance, then the money could be taken from, it sounds like somebody else would make us take it out of the general fund. Am I understanding that something, I'm missing something?
Sure. Um the way the bond ordinance was written is that unless an abatement ordinance is passed, then taxes would be levied by effectively the collection arm of Wooddale, which would be the county. So unless we were to tell the county not to levy the taxes, the county would levy the taxes and put it on your property tax bill.
So.
Pro rata, based upon your EAV and.
So even though we didn't say anything, they're gonna look at our books and go, you have ten, we'll use round numbers, ten million dollars in bonds, so therefore we have to add that to the tax assessment and that raises your, is that what you're saying?
Correct, yeah, in the bond ordinance that went to the to the county, there was a full twenty-year schedule of what the PNI payments would be. Uh the first year was two hundred sixty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. Seventy dollars, okay. That would go on to the uh property tax rolls. And then every year, it lays out what that amount would be going forward. So effectively, so long as we're all in agreement to pay it through the water and sewer bills, we're gonna have to pass one of these every year for the next twenty years.
Thank you.
So what you're saying, I think, is that basically is the water, is the, this amount that we borrowed going to be paid for by the water and sewer bill? Or are we going to not pass this and have it added to the house tax? Is that what you're saying, basically, simply?
Uh oversimplified, yes.
And if we do, if we do not pass this, does, will this affect our ability to get additional bond issues through and rates or anything else?
Not specifically sure what the actual impact would be. Um but I would presume that there would be some negative reaction from the marketplace by just letting it flip over to a GO right away. Uh they would probably say that if we were intending for it to be a GO, then we should have done the right thing and put it on a referendum and let the people vote on it instead of kind of gaming the system and doing an alternate revenue bond and then backdooring them, which is why it's called a backdoor GO.
So it's, the rates could go up for future?
Correct, just from a, basically, uh.
I'm sorry.
Basically, there'd be a lack, a potential lack of trust in the marketplace for what we're saying we're gonna actually do and how we're gonna fund them going forward.
The, you you would think there's a lack of trust in our marketplace? Alderman Coles, go ahead.
This is a, this is, this bond, this thing, uh, it is like the SSA bonds in it that we carry for the uh sections of Wooddale years ago, that uh people that lived in that area paid for on the uh tax bills or a tr- uh a, if I remember right, that, something like that. Remember the SSA bills, uh tax levies that we gave out in the industrial area?
Sure.
They could dis, they could take, they put them on their property tax bill so they could deduct it off of their income tax, if I remember right, this is a long time ago, 'cause we haven't had one for a long time.
Sure, yeah, there's, there's technically four active special service areas within the city.
Yeah.
Um one on each corner that the city's domiciled in of Wooddale and Thorndale. Um the fourth one is actually, now it's a two-parcel lot on the northeast corner of Wooddale and Thorndale. And the way those works is that there's certain requirements you have to meet for special service areas and the industrial parks wanted the roads redone and some other improvements put in. And so the, those uh specific business parks have the special service area tax levied upon them to issue the bonds to pay for those improvements. Um so yeah, those are twenty-year bonds as well, um and they do go on to their property tax levy. And the bond and the the difference here is that the special service areas.
Yeah.
That that service is the liability of those property owners. Whereas this is the liability of the city to.
It would be on the same principle as them, but the whole city would be involved.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Well, I'll make a motion that we follow staff's recommendation and pass the two thousand and twelve property tax abatement ordinance. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I didn't hear that many ayes, but I didn't hear any opposed. Yeah, well, we'll take a roll call on this, good idea. Thank you.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Chocky?
Yes.
Alderman Zizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman UG Musley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, the next item, six-month budget review. It'll just take about six minutes to go through, right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um we thought it would be timely, um but not even a full month after the end of the six-month mark, but also to have this on the same night as the audit presentation, to kinda to continue to to highlight where the city's at. It's fun. Nice. All right. Well, there should be, there should be a chart there.
That's the new one. That iPad will get you all the time. Oh. It has to be loaded.
It's in front of me.
No, I got the original on there. I just gotta find it.
It's in the original packet.
I didn't get no package. I didn't get no package. I don't get no packages, no. They don't send me one.
Yeah, it was in the original electronic packet.
I I I'm, I know.
Okay.
It's in the, it's in the iPad.
Correct.
I know that, I'm getting to it. Sorry, go ahead. Don't come, I don't come out all the time. Mine don't come out. It's in the over here, it doesn't come out.
Okay, um working, I'll be working off of the paper. Um so on what's would be the second page, um you can see the six-month uh from two thousand and nine to two thousand and thirteen, we went through and put the six, the first column is the six-month point, then the budget for that particular year and then the final, the actual number for that particular year. Uh you'll notice in two thousand and thirteen, there's no third column, because since we're only halfway through the year, there's no, there's no final number. Um and as we just went through with uh Mr. Termine from Wolf, you'll notice that in two thousand and twelve, we actually finished the year above in revenue collections, uh which is the first time in the last two years that we've finished ahead of revenues, uh ahead of budget. Uh the two biggest items that drove that were sales tax and telecom tax collections. Those were the two, two big items. Um income tax, which I know is always kinda catch up a month, fall behind a month. That was functionally the exact same number as it was the year before. The state really gets no further ahead or behind on that number. Now they've kinda fallen into a little bit of a a rut. So at least it's predictable for for how far behind they're gonna be on a month-to-month basis. Um the next slide is just a percentage um chart. Interesting note on the the chart with the percentage for revenues is you'll notice two thousand and nine and two thousand and twelve, we finished above a hundred percent on revenue collections. And in the first six months, we were over sixty-two percent in those two years. Uh you'll notice that in fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, we're above sixty-three percent. So we're confident that, uh you know, above sixty, sixty-two percent looks like a good place to be to finish the year ahead of pace in revenues. Um in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, we were in the fifties and finished slightly below budgeted numbers. So we're cautiously optimistic that uh it's gonna turn out pretty well for us this year. On the next page, six-month highlights, um the property taxes, building permits, uh PPRT, which we get from the state, vehicle license and liquor licenses are currently all on track to come in pretty much right where we we thought they would be. Uh income tax, cable franchise, sales, TraxGuard, which is the new uh video version of the cap in the box over on Irving Park at the grade uh over there. Telecommunication tax and impound fees are all coming in ahead of uh what we projected them for the year. And then rental housing and business licenses are collected after the six-month mark. So we really don't have a feel for how those are gonna come in. Um business licenses come in, are due by December thirty-first. So at the eight-month mark on those, we'll have a very good idea how they're gonna turn out. Uh the next chart, um sales tax is, you know, our biggest uh revenue line item. And so you can see, last year when we did this, we did the presentation in December for the six months. So we had the eight-month number, uh since it's only November, we only have the seven-month mark. So you'll notice, and this is actually one of my favorite parts of uh this presentation, is the, if you look at the seven-month uh table there in the middle, and you look at two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, you'll notice the difference between those numbers is only eight hundred and eighty dollars. So through the first seven months of two thousand and twelve and first seven months of two thousand and thirteen, our collections for sales tax, with everything that's going on in the world, are only eight hundred and eighty dollars different year over year, which is, just the fact that they're so close is remarkable. And then the fact that the number's holding year over year is also a very, very good sign for the city. Uh going on to the next one, the budget expenses, uh similar presentation to the revenues. The one comment I'll have about the six-month expenses in this year is we did have the land acquisition in there, uh which is over five hundred thousand dollars. That was not put into the budget uh when we did it. So of that six point five, um over half a million of that is the land acquisition that wasn't budgeted. So that that really tempers that number back down to a more manageable percentage, um which you can see on the next page, it brings it down a lot closer to, actually a little bit under fifty percent um on a percentage basis. Um on the next page, if you were to take that out, uh which again puts us below fifty percent, which looks like uh a sweet spot for finishing the year below budget overall in the general fund. Then in the narratives there, I do have that listed out, the five sixty-six land acquisition. So really, year over year, only a hundred thousand up in expenditures year over year. And the budget itself was about seven hundred thousand dollars higher than the year before. So expenditures are trending below what the actual budget increase was, which is a very positive thing um for all parties involved. And there's really no, nothing that really stands out aside from the land acquisition as being significantly problematic um for the city at the six-month point. Um just some other general comments there, on the next page, I've hit on most of those. Um comments on the other funds, uh the motel motel tax, again, is trending a little bit above projections. Water fuel tax uh is coming in above. Um non-home rule sales tax is coming in above. Non-home rule sales tax is coming in above, again, very similar. A little bit of a higher increase year to year, which is again a positive thing. And the commuter parking lot, the daily hang cards and the daily fees are trending at the projected levels. Does not appear that the rate increase we had a year and a half, two years ago is really put a damper on the usage of the parking lot, which is a positive thing for the parking lot itself. Sanitation fund, pretty much money in, money out, and the grants. You know, the police department is still doing a great job of getting a significant amount of money for various highway safety grants, Seaball Enforcement, things of that nature, so commend the police department for their continued work on getting grants. They'll cover their overtime for that. Couple of comments on water and capital. Again, the capital spending and the CIP is up again for the fourth year in a row. Water and sewer numbers are fairly higher than the last couple of years, largely predicated on the summer that we had, as hot as it was, people were doing more watering, more irrigation, perhaps turning on their humidifiers in the middle of the summer since it was so dry. So that's a positive for, for the water and sewer fund. Sorry, I know this is, this is exciting, I know. Moving on to the next slide where we get into the water and sewer fund itself. The last, last year we came in slightly under budget on the revenues. Largely predicated on, on water and sewer sales, that's, I believe, over ninety percent of the revenue in there, so kind of as the water and sewer revenues go, so goes the overall revenue in the fund. This year, I believe in the reports, we're over sixty percent already currently on the collections for water and sewer fees. Moving on to the expenses for the water and sewer fund. These numbers always look a little skewed, and the reason is that the capital projects that we do, the new water mains, any new lift stations, things of that nature, don't get categorized in the final expenses because they're capitalized, they get put into a different, different category, different classification, which does unfortunately skew those numbers a little bit at the end. And then the water accountability, this is something that about five years ago, the city was down in the low eighties, eighty percent, so we were only able to account for four out of every five gallons of water that we pumped. And at that point, the state put us on notice that we had to do a better job about that. So for a couple of years in a row, we commissioned leak studies to find leaks in the water mains, things like that. And so through that process, and then through the diligence of the utilities department, meter replacements, meter calibrations, the prior three years, we had been around ninety-one percent pumped to build, so we could account for just over every nine out of ten gallons that we pumped. This year, I know some of you are aware, we're going through a pretty massive meter replacement program over in the southwest side of town, going through, getting rid of a significant number of older meters. Accounting for that and a couple other large meters in the industrial park, we actually were able to get this year close to ninety-four percent for accountability purposes. And why that's important is that the more water we can account for and bill out, the better control of the rates we can have. You know, there's some communities that I've talked to that are sixty-six to seventy, seventy-five percent. So they're having to raise their rates faster to account for the fact that they're losing a third of their water, they just don't know where it's going. So the ninety, ninety-one, ninety-four percent is a tremendous number for us to be at, and, you know, all involved should really be commended for, for making that happen. That being said, the last slide, you know, there's really no anomalies that have come up that are really of great concern that I can see at this time. The sales tax and telecommunications numbers coming in stronger. Again, really for the second full year, there were a couple of trailing months at the end of last year, but this year they're, they're still holding, holding the line on that, so that's very good. And so far, like I said, it's shaping up to be a good year, but we're only halfway through it, so we just have to stay diligent and keep doing what we're doing and hope that things hold and there's no cliffs and bumps and that stuff, so.
Questions, comments? Alderman Wesley?
My question, Brad, how much, and, and we haven't seen it for a while, how much does the state hold of, and how many months are they behind in their property tax?
Yeah, the income tax. I believe in the-
We haven't seen it for a while, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. We put it in the, the monthly staff reports, I believe this last time there were four months, and it was I wanna say just north of three fifty, I wanna say, just shooting from memory. But we did yesterday get one for a little over seventy thousand to bring them back down to three months behind, and they're kinda hovering in the three to four month range every time when it rolls over, that's where they've been for probably the last year and a half to two years, they've been about three to four months, depending on what time-
Three and four months is not coming in with all the, in any of these numbers that you're sharing.
Correct.
So they're always between three and four months.
Correct. Thanks.
Any other questions? Are you finished, Mr. Wilson?
Absent any other questions, this was an information item, just to keep you abreast of how we're doing, and I have nothing else.
So we do, should have a, a recommendation. Don't need a motion per se, but a recommendation from the council I'll make is to accept your report as stated. Does anybody else have any comments? If not, Alderman Woods, please do.
Yeah, one question. When you mentioned the police grants and stuff like that, did the city not get any grants or monies this year at all to mention?
Sure. We, the city itself has completed and received the hundred thousand dollar grant from Representative Reba Letty. We have all that money in. We currently have in the hopper down in Springfield, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from Senator Pankow. We also threw our work with Price Sowers from GNP, the guy doing the LED lights. We have that grant going at eighty-five thousand, we're also working on him, with him, excuse me, on a grant to possibly help us out with some of the LED lighting that we installed at the Metro Station as well. So we're kinda working, taking the pay requests from Dunham and Baxton Woodman and getting that to him to work with the state on those as well. There's also a energy efficiency grant that we're working on at the treatment plant. I apologize, I if it's with the blower, there's something, there's some new component that we're putting in. Yeah, and then, so that's getting a a significant amount of money to help supplement the cost of them. Yeah, we were just notified, I think, in the last couple of days of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for crosswalk improvements and safety improvements, particularly in the school zones and for the crosswalks for the pool and things like that.
That's the one I was looking for. So it-
It's around two hundred and fifty thousand. Yeah, that's the STP funding through Mayor's Managers for TCM projects for safety. It's two fifty. Yeah.
I thought it was seventy percent of seven hundred thousand. I remember.
You're right, Mayor, because we did include the LED signs as well as stamped concrete, it was the stamped crosswalks, you're correct, it is seventy percent of seven hundred thousand.
Four ninety.
It's about four ninety, that's correct, sir.
Even better news.
Exactly, I just wanted everybody to hear, you know, that we're doing everything we can to find revenue sources outside our regular sources to augment some of the projects that we're doing, so. Good job, thanks.
Anything else there? Okay, then the next item is items to be considered at future meetings. Number one is the DWC rate increase. We'll be doing that December thirteenth. Property casualty discussion, December thirteenth. The CIP, January of two thousand-